I am President Alderman James. Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Henderleider.
Here.
Alderman Steelman.
Here.
City Administrator Walden.
Present.
City Clerk Capitol.
Present.
City Attorney Weber.
Present.
Public Works Director Nash.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase.
Present.
Economic Development Director Burbidge.
Present.
President and the County Attorney. Next item on the agenda is under hearing of persons, we have Alicia Elwood, Director of His Place. Alicia, come on forward, please. What can we do for you, ma'am?
Good evening. We are just, uh, His Place Director, His Place Permission, it is requesting permission to close the part of purging that was between, um, or State Central Street, that's between purging and go on July thirty first from three to nine P M. People be wanting a, you can, there's a, there's a place to, and.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
Do we have a motion at this time?
I make a motion. Please sit there. Motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any second, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is under bids, we have a, uh, contact tank painting project. Mark, would you like to introduce the bids, please, for that?
We received these bids from, uh, Archer Elgin. Do you want each one of the bids, all of them, or you just want the one with?
Um, why don't you just give us the, you know, packets?
You've got the packets, what the man?
So wish.
Yep. After meeting with, uh, um, Archer Elgin, we went over the bids. If you notice there, the, the low bid by Elliot Painting, um, of eighteen thousand four hundred dollars, um, after talking with him, he didn't meet the requirements of what we needed done. He was a, uh, contract painter, but it was more on construction side. He was just getting into, to doing the type of work we were needing done, so we would like to bring Hogan's Incorporated to you for your consideration, and the total bid on it was fifty fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dot, fifty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So staff recommendation and also Archer Engineering would be to go with Hogan's?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion at this time?
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
What is the budgeted amount for this?
Sixty. Who's that? It's more than that, I know.
Okay.
Hogan's has done, uh, been around in the core, they have excellent quality, but we're sure it's, uh, you know, they concerned about the work.
Any more questions? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote, Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Henderleider.
Yes.
Right back, quick.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the motion on a second to approve the consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote, Alderman Henderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is under reports of city officials, boards, and committees, Mr. Walden, Mayor Upso.
It's Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. Uh, recently, we had a final walkthrough on the tapped sidewalk project, uh, between the armory and park and the high school, and, uh, had a few things on the punch list, but, uh, relatively minor, so that project should be wrapping up soon. You may have seen in the paper, uh, putting out, uh, requesting bids for our trash service, uh, that contract, uh, is due to renew this, or come up for, uh, renewal this September, so, uh, wanting to get those bids in time for you all to have time to look at those and, uh, make a decision. Uh, we listed as the first time, uh, recycling as an option, so you should get bids both for just straight up trash or with the recycling option, and we didn't specify, uh, the type of recycling, so we asked the bidders to specify what, you know, uh, format they would do, so you should have a full range of options once we, uh, get those bids back. I forget when the due date is.
Friday is April twenty-four, uh, twenty-ninth, so we could have it on the August third or January.
So we should have that, uh, tabulation to you at the, or summary at, uh, the next full Alderman meeting. And then, uh, on the utility billing, uh, we continue to work with our, um, uh, billing software vendor, uh, we are making progress, I'm glad to say. Uh, since we last met, uh, we've pulled, uh, two read cycles into our billing system, uh, one of which has been posted to our general ledger. On the second one, we've got a little, uh, cleanup to do on our end, and as soon as we get that done, uh, that will be posted. And then we'll be entering the payment contracts for people that selected option three, which was, uh, they paid the April actual, and then, uh, they could carry the February and March amounts over twelve months, so that will be set up as a payment contract. That has to be done before we can process the third read cycle, and then, after we process the third one, then we'll do the option twos, which is a combination of, that was the budget billing option, but in, includes budget billing plus, uh, uh, payment contract for twelve months for the, the past due, for the, um, February, March, and April balance. So with each cycle, uh, it's getting cleaner, and, uh, I'm, uh, I'm confident that we'll be able to meet our, our objective of having the bill for, uh, June consumption out this month. And so, uh, we had a, uh, conference call today with both our, uh, billing software vendor, uh, Incode, and our, uh, AMI vendor, uh, NextGrid, and, uh, NextGrid's part is, uh, um, you know, pretty close to completion. Uh, we have a few, uh, isolated meters where we'll, uh, um, working at, uh, options to, uh, bring those reads in, uh, through our system, and then, uh, we have a last shipment of, uh, meters and modules that we've received, so we're just waiting for the okay from our, uh, billing software vendor to go ahead and, uh, do the field installation of those meters. And with that, that will complete, you know, the, the field part of the, um, of the installation, and then it's back up, you know, all on software, so, um, our, um, utility billing, uh, vendor, uh, had some thoughts and suggestions that they wanted to share with you all, so we'll schedule that in, in some format that's, um, you know, is agreeable to, to you all and, and, uh, give you a chance to look at those, uh, some of what they offer, uh, there's other, you know, options available, and, uh, we can have a full, uh, discussion on that and, and, um, you know, see what your pleasure is on that. We're, uh, following up with people on the, the drafts and, uh, the auto pay, so, uh, nobody should be surprised, and, uh, the draft packets are generated as, uh, billing process is done through our billing software, and so, uh, we're looking at getting these first three read cycles done before, you know, a draft packet is, is processed, and so we will coordinate with people, so they will know, you know, what the options they selected, they should be the, aware of the amounts, and, and we'll communicate the timing, but we'll make sure we've got their, uh, confirmation before those are processed, and so we're not trying to catch anybody or surprise anybody with that, that's not our intent, and that's not in our interest to do that. Other projects that were included in the budget, uh, were, um, working with our engineer or other firms as needed to proceed with those, and so, as we get more information on expected, uh, timeframes for the, uh, uh, customer service and security improvements at the admin building, uh, we'll communicate those through a press release or Facebook post, and so the general expectation is, is that roughly over the next eight weeks, we expect that work to be going on, and so we expect to still be servicing customers as we have been through the drive-up or through, uh, uh, by phone, uh, as needed, if people need to get into the building to take care of business, uh, we'll stay, still make that accommodation, uh, that will be the case after the, the remodel, and it's the case now, you know, on a case-by-case basis, if, if people need to come in and, you know, uh, do something with the cemetery or, or, you know, a business license or what have you, need in the building to do that, um, you know, we're still taking care of those customers, so we'll try to communicate, uh, the status of any changes as best we can, uh, but as of right now, it's basically as we've been doing the last several weeks, so.
Is there, it feels like it'll be the twentieth of the month. It feels like we're probably gonna do another bill outside Incode.
I don't think so.
You think you can pull it together before, okay?
Yep. Um, you know, if not, we'll make arrangements to do something outside, but I, I really think Evan will be, will be in a good spot to, to do it through Incode.
What day, what, what, any target date, or?
Uh, well, the, it's on us right now to, to do this cleanup, you know, so it's basically however fast we can all do it and taking care of, you know, what, you know, customers wanting to pay their bill or having questions, still making progress on that. Uh, I, um, here we are, the twentieth, uh, I would think we would have, uh, possibly two more, uh, postings this week, and then depending upon how fast we can enter those contracts and the budget billing, uh, that would hopefully post, uh, uh, early or by mid next week, and then, uh, everything will be set up for that, the full end of June reads, and, um, you know, unless there's problems with reads, uh, that should go relatively quickly.
And to be real clear about the drafting, you know, auto draft with A C H or whatever the case may be, what is that? You're, you're, are you gonna give them a phone call, or are you sending them a letter?
That's my understanding of what staff have done, it's called individual people, uh, regarding their account and their draft, and drafts are different than like the credit card, you know, the drafts or the, the A C H, you know, uh, whereas credit card, you know, auto pay is different.
I know that, yeah, the credit cards are already going through, or debit cards, whatever the case would be, but the, the A C H is what hasn't gone through.
Correct.
Do you all remember, have any other questions for Mr. Walden? Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is under introduction and reading of bills and resolutions, Mrs. Happel, could you please introduce Bill number thirty-four fifty-four, please?
Bill number thirty-four fifty-four, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents for the City of Salem, Missouri to participate in the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Energy Loan Program, whereas the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri desire to make improvements to city-owned buildings that reduce utility consumption, maintenance costs, and operation costs, and whereas the City of Salem, Missouri entered into an agreement with McKinstry for a detailed engineering study to design and engineer interior and exterior lighting retrofits at all city buildings, and whereas the City of Salem, Missouri was approved for a project cost loan for the maximum total amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri as follows, section one, the Board of Aldermen hereby approve the mayor to execute all documents for project cost loan in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, one percent loan origination fee and accrued interest at a simple annual rate of two and three-quarters percent. Section two, the progress is to, the project is to be completed no later than December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, unless an extension is approved in writing by the Department of Natural Resources. Section three, with the project improvement, for the projected improvements to city-owned buildings, the utility savings is estimated to be thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars per year. Section four, the first payment due date is January first, twenty-twenty-two, with final payment due July first, twenty-thirty-one. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval. Mayor, would you like a full second reading or caption only?
Caption only, please.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-four, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents for the City of Salem, Missouri to participate in Missouri Department of Natural Resources Energy Loan Program, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this twentieth day of July, twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on Bill number thirty-four fifty-four?
I make a motion to approve Bill number thirty-four fifty-four.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, any discussion? So Walden, do you have a chance to, to be the associated doctor?
I'm referring, I haven't completed a real induction process, it's a, we've been federal government seeing our negotiating, down there is extremely, one thing I did note in there, when I was looking through is, uh, any repayment of it, then you can't put forward a special tax or take payments from a fund that's not specifically designated, but it also mentioned, uh, when we were exact aware, that the loans be repaid based on the savings, the energy savings, and so if we're unable to repay it based on our, um, projected energy savings at this, we'll renegotiate terms.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote, Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Henderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Next item is Bill number thirty-four fifty-five, Mrs. Happel.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-five, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a guaranteed energy savings agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, City, and McKinstry Ascension LLC, McKinstry, for installation of energy system components and measure and verify savings, whereas the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri desire to make improvements to city-owned buildings described in attachment A, that reduce utility consumption, maintenance costs, and operation costs, and whereas, after completion, the project, McKinstry, not the project, McKinstry will measure and verify savings based on year-one measurement verification multiplied by the average annual utility rate. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri as follows, section one, the Board of Aldermen hereby approve the mayor to sign a guaranteed energy savings agreement between the City and McKinstry for compensation for good services and reimbursable expenses, not to exceed one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars without prior written approval of the City. Section two, the agreement will expire fifteen years after the completion date. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval. Would you like a second reading or by cap, in full by caption only?
Caption only, please.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-five, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a guaranteed energy savings agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, City, and McKinstry Ascension LLC, McKinstry, for installation of energy system components and measure and verify savings.
Thank you.
As by, sorry, as by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this twentieth day of July, twenty-twenty.
Sorry. Do we have a motion on Bill number thirty-four fifty-five?
Make a motion to approve Bill number thirty-four fifty-five.
Motion, do we have a second? Any second, discussion?
They're responsible for, uh, capturing the savings every year.
If they're not, why is the contractor being responsible?
It appears that we're supposed to capture like seventy-nine hundred and change every year saving. Based on performance guarantee.
We have Drew with us from McKinstry, does that sound right, Drew?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Dollar amount of the savings expected is, uh, I'd say seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine eighty-two is what it is.
Seventy-nine eighty-two?
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote, Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman Parker, please. Alderman Henderleider.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Next item is Bill number thirty-four fifty-six, we saw it close.
And, Bill number thirty-four fifty-six, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the City of Salem, Missouri, a real estate sale agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and Sherman R. Odom and Marcia E. Odom, whereas the City of Salem, Missouri, here to refer to as seller, wishes to sell property as described in attachment A, exhibit A, known as the subject property, and whereas Sherman R. and Marcia E. Odom herein after referred to as purchaser, would like to sell two pieces of property as described in attachment A, exhibit B, and exhibit C, be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri as follows, section one, the Board of Aldermen hereby authorize the mayor to sign the real estate sale agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and Sherman R. and Marcia E. Odom, and agree to terms and conditions set out described in the real estate sale agreement. Section two, the purchaser desires and agrees to purchase, the seller desires and agrees to sell the subject property upon the following terms and conditions set forth herein. The price to be paid by purchaser to seller therefore is the transfer of two real properties herein after referred to as exchange property one, with legal description attached tier two as exhibit B, incorporated by reference as if set forth fully herein, and exchange property two, with legal description attached tier two as exhibit C, incorporated by reference as if set forth fully herein to seller as valuable consideration for the purchase of the subject property herein. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after the date of its passage and approval. Would you like a full reading again or?
Caption only, please.
Bill number thirty-four fifty-six, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the City of Salem, Missouri, a real estate sale agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and Sherman R. Odom and Marcia E. Odom, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this twentieth day of July, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, do we have a motion on Bill number thirty-four fifty-six?
We make a motion, we approve Bill number thirty-four fifty-six.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Any second, any discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote, Alderman Steelman.
Yes.
Alderman James.
Yes.
Alderman Henderleider.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution sixteen dash twenty-twenty, Mrs. Happel, please.
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a partnership agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and People Centric Consulting Group, whereas the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, City, desire to enter into a partnership agreement with People Centric Consulting Group, People Centric, for organizational consulting services. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri as follows, section one, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City a partnership agreement between the City and People Centric for organizational consulting services. Section two, the City agrees to pay People Centric three thousand dollars at the first of each month prior to services being rendered for that month. The City will also reimburse People Centric any travel expenses incurred due to performing such services. Section three, the partnership agreement can be canceled at any time with a thirty-day notice. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval, passed by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, and approved by the mayor this twentieth day of July, twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on Resolution sixteen twenty-twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen twenty-twenty, four discussions.
Motion, do we have a second? Any second, discussion?
Can you go over some of what the calls will be with this?
Some of the things we've been, uh, working with them over the last few months, uh, just, uh, kind of get a, a sense of their capability and, uh, working with us is, uh, we've developed a, a onboarding process for, uh, new employees that come on with the City of Salem are, will be exposed to the different departments and, uh, understand what the different departments do and how what their, uh, where they work at, uh, fits in with that. Uh, we've developed, uh, uh, managers' process for, uh, um, process where managers will meet on a regular basis and discuss, uh, citywide goals, and how that falls back to their, uh, individual departments, and then we have the flexibility of, if we have specific needs, that, uh, they'll do what we ask them to do, and so, uh, we just thought that the nature of, uh, what they've proven they can do, and knowing the capacity of the organization, it's like we get the benefit of a additional staff person, but without the financial commitment of actually hiring somebody. Uh, we can terminate this at any time we feel like, uh, we don't need it anymore, and, uh, there's less, uh, strings attached compared to hiring, you know, a, a professional and, and having them work on, you know, some of the, the organizational things that they're working on. Mayor's been in on a lot of this with me, and if, if there's more you want to add, but, uh, we've gotten some things in place, uh, over a very hectic last few months that would have been simply impossible without their assistance. Um, they take direction very well, and they're responsive, and, uh, some of you have, uh, interacted with them in other organizations, uh, they're a, a capable firm and a good track record, uh, they do a lot of things for our community, they're committed to Salem, and, and, uh, I think they'll want to continue to do a good job for you.
I've worked with People Centric before, and they're, they are really good, and they do a lot of good work, um, I just thought it would be beneficial to kind of put that, what that kind of work is, is consulting is very vague as far as what we intend to use this kind of work, if we go through with it.
It appears to be somewhat of a, of resources to.
And so it's a monthly rate, and I know it can be canceled any, any time, what if there's an event where we're just, we don't foresee needing them in the next month, but we don't feel that necessarily we have to cancel them, or can we just take that back a couple months down the road, or?
I think the intent is more like a retainer, and so, uh, if we don't feel like we're gonna be needing their services, I think it'd be use us to, to end the contract.
I would say with the projects that we have going with them, I, I really don't see that happening in the near future, um, but like Ray said, uh, I've been in, in discuss, excuse me, in discussions with them on a weekly basis, um, they call me, uh, every Thursday morning, and we have a, a conference call, and then Thursday afternoon, uh, Ray and I have a conference call with them, and I know they've contacted, uh, s- individual staff members on, um, a pretty regular basis, uh, checking in and having things. So far, I've been very impressed with, um, with what they've done, and some of the plans that they've come up with, and, uh, I, I think we will continue with them, uh, I think we'll see the, the fruits of that.
How does this fall in the budget?
It wasn't explicitly budgeted, you know, this would be, uh, coming out of, we've been doing it out of non-departmental special services, uh, they're, if, depending upon how the year goes, you know, worst-case scenario would, uh, mean ending the year with needing a budget adjustment if we, you know, don't have, uh, room in there to cover it outside of a budget adjustment. I, I, I think we have room for at least some of the thirty, 'cause we had, you know, planned on some, you know, special services, you know, uh, in the budget, uh, you know, not necessarily this explicit, explicit item, but, uh, I, I wouldn't expect needing a budget adjustment at the end of more than, you know, ten or fifteen thousand.
And we have specific goals that, that you kind of mentioned earlier, but.
I, I think one of the things.
Short-term that we're gonna do, or?
That's what we've been doing, and wha- what I would, uh, imagine would happen, uh, if you're agreeable, is that we would start off, uh, with, uh, uh, some kind of setting with them and, and you all, and kind of defining, uh, what you see as priorities needed, you know, uh, beyond what they've already, you know, have been working on.
Is there extra, additional costs? Travel, okay, I've seen that, but I don't know if there's anything else that I missed.
And they've been very receptive to that, at least in the last three months, um, they've done a lot of phone calls, they've done a lot of Zoom meetings, um, and they've been trying to limit travel as much as possible, so. Any other discussion?
Here and then we'll call for the vote. Alderman Steeleman?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is resolution number seventeen twenty twenty. At this time I'd entertain a motion to postpone this to a later meeting. The school has contacted us and asked for some different items and what's in the, in the resolution and also Attorney Weber would like to make some adjustments as well. So it's not quite ready, so we need a motion and a second to postpone.
Make a motion, we postpone resolution seventeen twenty twenty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second, any discussion? Call for the vote. Alderman Steeleman?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Next item up is under unfinished business. We have the airport hangar rental fees. Mr. Walden, have we got any further on the rental fees?
I did forward a draft lease agreement to Attorney Weber for review that was a concern at our last meeting and I'll let him comment on his findings as far as your concern, Alderman James, on, you know, leasing it to a business or if that would introduce additional liability.
And with regard to the agreement that the city administrator sent me, I didn't see any particular issues. I think, if I can find it again, so you have it up in front of me. I think as, as far as the additional liabilities, I don't have any information from your insurance with regard as to how that would be affected with the, or how it would cover any liabilities there as well. But as far as the lease goes, I didn't see any issues with the current lease. There was something that was brought up and if I can find it, because I'm having a hard time recalling the wording, but about, basically about air-ready aircraft. And one thing that could probably be adjusted is a definition for that within the lease. Other than that, I don't have any additional comments about it.
Because we have some unanswered questions. I don't, you don't have rates yet.
Do we need to make?
We talked about adding other board members and then having a, a meeting and. Maybe we can go ahead and look, you know, as a mayor, get some recommendations for additional board members and then scheduling a meeting. And, you know, we can get an opinion from our insurance carrier, you know, to the, answer the question.
I'll try to have those appointments ready by the next meeting. I'm sorry, I should have had that done by now, but. So do you want to make a motion to postpone?
Make a motion to postpone.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Here and then we'll call for the vote. Alderman James?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Alderman Steeleman? Next item on the agenda is under new and miscellaneous business. We have differential paid for police department personnel. Chief Chase, would you like to present that, please?
The way our current midnight differential pays, would you mind to come up to the mic, please? Okay. I know for what to clarify. Sorry. It's okay. With the air conditioner on, it's hard to hear. Okay. That better? Yeah. Okay. So the way our current midnight shift differential pay is set is it is set at twenty cents per hour. It has been that way for the last thirty years. This has given us a disadvantage when it comes to employee retention because we have surrounding agencies that pay a significantly higher amount for their midnight differential. Case in point would be RALA, who is our closest competing agency as far as size and compensation. We're, we're close to them, we're not at the same level, but their midnight shift differential is a dollar fifty. We're not asking for that much, we're looking at a dollar fifteen on the hour for midnight shift differential. And that would only apply for the hours of the day that the officers were working from past nine PM until seven AM the following morning. And as a part of that, if we had an increased shift differential, we could advertise that in our job postings. We've had our current open position posted for six weeks and I've received zero responses to that. So it is just something, I mean, it's not something that I think, that I think is out of line as far as the number. I've kind of crunched the numbers for other local agencies and we're right in line with similar sized organizations, similar sized towns. And so in our current political climate, it's hard to find people to fill those positions. So we're, we're trying to do small steps that would motivate people to want to come to work for us versus, you know, large expensive steps.
Do you have any to have St. James or Cuba?
I did not go to Cuba. St. James differential is seventy-five cents. Licking runs a seventy-five cents. Houston is at eighty-five cents. And then there are, there was another one that was close by, it's around the top of my head. They offered no shift differential at all. And so, but they're also having a very hard time getting people. That was the one I was trying to remember off the top of my head. I don't, I looked at several of these over the past few weeks. And I think with the history of our shift differential, it hasn't changed in thirty years, so I, I think we're long overdue on that.
The one that they had changed in their base pay may be different or?
I'm sorry.
Their base pay may be different?
Well, and there could be a reflection in, in a merit raise or a, you know, a step increase, you know, to offset to that. It just depends because everyone schedules differently. Some people run what's called a Kelly schedule, which is a twelve-on, twelve-off. On an eight-hour shift, the differentials would obviously be, be lower because you wouldn't have as much time past midnight or past nine AM. Ours is set for a ten-hour shift.
Do we have a motion at this time?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the differential, the differential A to change to one fifteen.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Here and then we'll call for the vote. Alderman Steeleman?
Yes.
Alderman Hinderleider?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Alderman James?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. At this time I need a motion to adjourn. Mayor? And do we have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Well, it's not on the agenda, we talked to him as soon as he takes over. You made a motion, you made a second, okay? All in favor, rise and go for it.